As the Mayor of the Town of Clayton, I'd like to call this regular Town Council meeting to order. I ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the Town of Clayton. For us in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
There are no adjustments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, next then will be your consent agenda.
Move we approve.
Second? We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so. Motion carries. All right, next, under introduction and special presentations, we have new employee introductions.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. It's my, or I'm sorry, my name is Jonathan Jacobs. I'm the Assistant Town Engineer. It's my privilege to introduce you tonight, Michael Warner, our newest construction project administrator in the engineering department. Michael brings us over 20 years of concrete and construction experience with 11 years at the City of Raleigh Public Utilities and two years at the Town of Wake Forest, where I had the privilege of previously working with him before my time with Clayton. He's a good asset to our team and will help us continue to get the appropriate infrastructure needs that we have from private development and oversee private development for the engineering department.
Nice to meet everyone. I look forward to working with you guys and see everyone around town. Thank you.
That's great. So you're coming to us from Wake Forest?
Yes, sir.
So Mayor Vivian keeps score with which mayors take her employees. So I'm sure we're on her radar now.
Well, tell Mayor Jones Jonathan said, "Hey."
I will do that. Welcome. Yes, sir. All right, up next is the 2021 Employee of the Year.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rich Capola, interim Town Manager. This is one of the fun parts of the year where, you know, annually, we do a call for nominations to the employees to nominate their peers that they have seen really provide exemplary service throughout the year. This year, we were proud that we had 12 separate nominations, several of those folks getting multiple nominations from various members of our staff. And so, one of the things we'd like to do is play a video that kind of highlights all those nominees, as well as show some recognition to who ultimately was the Employee of the Year. So with that, last thing.
Jimmy Brantley is a detective with the Clayton Police Department. Before his promotion to detective, he served with the K-9 unit for over seven years. Since joining the Investigations Division, he has led Clayton Police Department to multiple case closures. Detective Brantley goes out of his way to help others and graciously does more than is asked or required of him. Nader Abellhausen is the Town's Communications Development Specialist, and he has a passion for videography. Every video that Nader creates perfectly highlights Clayton's potential and career while holding on to our small-town vibe. Nader works nights, on weekends, and attends events for various town departments. His commitment to the job and making Clayton look good is second to none. This past year, Kathy took on new responsibilities as the interim Public Information Officer and accomplished portions of her role as the Clayton Center Box Office Manager. Kathy's knowledge and commitment to Clayton allowed her to aid the town in its time of need. She was plunged into the world of social media, websites, COVID-19, and reporters. Kathy dealt with these challenges with exceptional attention to detail and quality work. We are so grateful to have Kathy on our team. As the Town's Safety Officer, Jepa Pratton, led by example. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Jepa ensured that the workplace was as safe as possible for all employees. She takes her job with the seriousness that we should all admire. Jimmy Brantley is the Athletics and Operations Superintendent for Clayton Parks Immigration. Jimmy strives to make sure that all parks, greenways, and ballpills are maintained at a level that sets us apart from neighboring towns. On top of ensuring the town has quality facilities and top-notch athletic programs, Jimmy also is involved in providing services for all downtown-related events. Rod Harrison works as a crew leader for the Water Resources Department. He takes initiative in various situations and is ready to offer a helping hand when needed. As Stormwater Manager, Susan Mottler has a desire and passion to implement the stormwater and erosion control program. She's knowledgeable in her field and proactive in ensuring that Clayton's engineering department achieves the best possible outcome in its projects. Heather Brooks is an Administrative Assistant in the Operations Department. She's been described as a "how can I help you" type of employee. She is constantly adding more and more to her duties with a smile and can-do attitude. Mike Beasley is the Parks Maintenance Supervisor. Mike has given 15-plus years of dedicated service to this town of Clayton, and he is the glue that holds the operations side and parks and recreation together. He ensures that staff members have the tools and supplies needed to do their jobs and that their equipment is in working order. He also fixes the town's mini soccer and baseball fields so precisely that only a GPS guided robot could do better. Amy Sherrin works as the Emergency Management Coordinator for the Clayton Fire Department. She's always helpful and extremely organized. She's a member for the success of early downtown events such as the concert series, movie nights, Square to Square, and the Curse of Streetlight. Parks and Recreation Athletic Program Supervisor Nick Rummidge understands that having an enjoyable experience is the highest priority for the athletics participants. He regularly works evenings and weekends to ensure that all town athletic leagues are prepared to welcome local schools and athletic organizations. Hillary McFarland is the Town's HR Analyst. She is always available to help out any employee needing assistance. Also, her creativity with important emails is impressive. Hillary's patience and professionalism are beyond appreciated by her fellow employees.
On behalf of the Town of Clayton, I am proud to announce that Detective Jamie Brantley has been the 2021 Town of Clayton Employee of the Year. Jamie has been with the Clayton Police Department for over 14 years. He has served most of that time in patrol division, serving as a patrol officer, field training officer, a master patrol officer, K-9 handler with his partner Abel, and most recently was promoted to detective. He served as K-9 handler for seven years until the recent retirement event. Jamie works to represent the police department and the community with honesty, fairness, and dedication. Officer Brantley goes out of his way to help others and strives to leave every situation he encounters as a police officer with a positive outcome. He serves as a role model for young police officers and attempts to help mentor young people in the community that comes into contact with him. We are all proud to call him a coworker and more importantly, a friend. So congratulations to Detective Brantley, 2021 Town of Clayton Employee of the Year.
So obviously, we've got a lot of talented staff, many of which that we were able to highlight here tonight, but certainly Jamie exemplifies exactly what we want all of our employees to be. You heard Greg's words just about his approach to how he operates and just the attitude that he brings every day. And with everything that's going on in the world, to have a police officer nominated by his peers, not just in his own department, but have multiple nominations, couldn't see it be any more fitting than for Jamie to receive the award this year. His name has been added to our Employee of the Year plaque that you can see in the hallways of GS1 if you're traveling in the hall, but I'd like to give Jamie a moment to go ahead.
Not much time. I've been put on a time limit here, so. First, I just want to say thank you and I want to say congratulations of the roughly 240 employees here at the Town of Clayton to come out, to even be nominated is an honor, but to take top honors and come out on top, that's just a truly humbling experience. I can't tell you how humbling it is just to not be nominated by your peers, but anyone, everybody that gave you the nominations. What a whirlwind of emotions for me this year. Abel's retirement certainly hits hard. I've cried every emotion, I've laughed every emotion, but man, this is by far one of the most humbling experiences in my career here. I'm still a bit in shock. Anybody who knows me knows I'm not one of a few words, but I told these guys I would limit it tonight and I will do that, but truly, when I see Chief Tarts' face come across there and announce my name, I was truly at a loss for words. So I will say thank you. Hopefully, I can live up to the reputation of being Employee of the Year, so thank you to everyone who nominated me and to all the other employees. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd come down front, get a picture with us and go ahead and memorialize.
I gotta get one for the wife.
Very stoked teeth, very stoked. You know, as a mayor, when you sit here and you watch a video like that, and it just reiterates why you're so successful, because we have such great people working for the Town of Clayton. So congratulations to all of our employees and those who were nominated and to our new Town of Clayton Employee of the Year. All right, moving right along, up next is the FR 6004 FX Robotics Team Presentation.
I'm just going to introduce really quickly, I'm not going to do a whole lot of talking, but this past December, I'm Joy Garrett, ten library director. Hello, Council and Mayor and Town Manager. I had the opportunity this past couple of weeks back to host the Team 6004. They came in and did a virtual reality class for girls in grades five through eight and one special fourth grader. They are just such a great group of girls. They have worked with us in the past when they were the Techno Tigresses and are really doing a lot to spread awareness and opportunities for girls to take part in STEM and STEAM activities, and so we wanted to get them up here to tell you a little bit about what they do and about their team. So come on.
Hi, I'm Sydney Matasoff, and I met you in 2019 when I stood here as a seventh grader on the all-girls first LEGO League Robotics Team, the Techno Tigresses. Tonight, I'm here as a freshman in high school, along with my teammates Caitlin Ulti and Sloane, to tell you about our first robotics competition team, Team 6004, and how we are giving back to the Clayton community. First, I want to give you a little history on the high school-level robotics team. Team 6004 is a first robotics competition team, which is the largest global robotics program for students K through 12. There are nearly 4,000 teams across 34 countries. FRC teams exercise and develop teamwork skills in building, programming, and operating industrial-sized robots used in competition. In addition, in addition, students learn soft skills such as finance, digital animation, and marketing. Team 6004 is currently the only FRC team in Johnston County. We are one of the 57 teams in First North Carolina District. We currently practice at Smithfield-Soma High School, but we bring in students from multiple towns and schools in the area to form a community team. Within the past few months, we won two major offseason events. We won Thundering Heart of Robots, also known as Thor, back in July in Raleigh. We won Doyen Inspiration, which is an all-girls robotics competition, back in October in Cary. Both were very exciting wins and give us a lot of momentum heading into the season which starts in January. Our team started with seven members back in 2015. For many years, it was a school-only team, but in order to grow the program and provide more opportunities to the Johnston County youth, we became a community team a few years ago. Growth in members was still slow, topping out at 25 members prior to COVID. This season, our team exploded. Currently, we have 41 students enrolled in the team, which means there's been almost a 60% increase in participants over the last year. We have more diversity than ever before, and the number of young women joining is record-breaking, not only for us, but a North Carolina first team overall. The recent increase in female representation has allowed us to participate in first-like-a-girl opportunities and mentoring around the country. You will hear more about that in a minute. The team has various departments, including mechanical, electrical, programming, digital, awards, and marketing. Students select departments based on their interest areas and strengths. I'm part of the marketing team. This team cultivates and exercises real-world skills such as inclusion, teamwork, and gracious professionalism, all while preparing students to compete in the largest STEM-based competition in the world. We know you've heard a lot about STEM education, but what exactly does it look like in our county? Here's Caitlin to tell y'all more.
Hello, my name is Caitlin Ulti. I'm a ninth grader attending Johnston County Early College Academy in the STEM program and am a part of the programming team for Team 6004. The first slide I will be presenting is focused on STEM-based education. There are only two major programs in the county focused on STEM education, one being the Johnston County Early College Academy STEM Program, which I am a part of, and the other being Project Lead the Way. Johnston County Early College Academy STEM Program is a program at Johnston Community College for high school students to get a high school education and an associate's degree in engineering or science in five years. Project Lead the Way is a national high school education program that helps students learn STEM-based subjects along with others. The lack of STEM-based opportunities in our county is why our community team, Team 6004, is so important. It is an outlet for students who are interested in STEM to have real-world, hands-on learning experiences in all aspects of the STEM field. Recently, a professor at MIT told an audience, "People don't see themselves in new roles unless the community steps in to help them visualize the future. Our team helps Johnston County students visualize the future." Another important topic touching on STEM, the United States is falling behind other world powers like China and STEM education. While many of our colleges offer STEM programs here, what many people don't realize is that the majority of the students are not Americans. Students are coming from other countries and taking their STEM knowledge with them as they leave the US. While the United States is currently a leader in many fields, including engineering, AI, sciences, and defense technology, we will not be able to maintain that position without significantly increasing our numbers of American students who will stay here and reinvest themselves and their knowledge back into our country's STEM programs. Now, I would like to talk about the importance of community service and volunteering. Team 6004 believes that giving back to our community, who has been so supportive of us, is vital. We regularly do community service events and activities to show our appreciation. One of our most recent service events was hosting a First LEGO League tournament on November 20th. First LEGO League teams are part of the FIRST program, but First LEGO League is for middle schoolers, while First Robotics Competition is for high schoolers. I was also a part of an all-girls First LEGO League team for two years before doing it at First Robotics Competition, so for me personally, it was very rewarding to be able to work at one of these tournaments. The President's Volunteer Service Award is a prestigious national program which we are privileged to be involved with. This program recognizes how vital community service is to our country and honors volunteers whose actions make a difference in their communities and schools. Now to Sloane, who will discuss our First Like a Girl Initiative and SWE Next program.
A recent study by Microsoft stated, "Confidence in coding and programming wanes as girls get older," highlighting the need to connect STEM subjects to real-world people and problems, tapping into girls' desire to be creative, and encouraging them at home and at school. Hi, I'm Sloane Man. I live in Clayton. I'm an eighth-grade homeschooler, and I'm the team's First Like a Girl and website lead. This year, Team 6004 started our First Like a Girl initiative. In previous years, our team was male-dominated with a few girls here and there. However, this year is different. And we believe it is important now to start a pipeline to encourage young girls to join high school robotics and pursue their interests in STEM. And nearly half of our team is female and non-binary. Our First Like a Girl program allows us to share resources and teach free technology classes. On December 4th, we partnered with the Clayton Library and Oak Ridge Computer Science Girls out of Tennessee to host an Introduction to Virtual Reality class for fifth through eighth grade girls to get them interested in STEM. I'm proud to say our class was full, and we're hoping to offer another class in March or April. We need your help and funding to continue offering great classes at the Clayton Library. This December class cost us just over $200, which the Friends of the Library helped us to fund most of the costs. We want to offer more classes and maybe a short camp a few times this year. We believe adding $2,000 to the library's budget to help us put in these classes would be a great investment on your part and for the Clayton community in STEM education. Several national STEM girl programs have shown interest in what we're doing and have offered us to help teach these technology classes, including Tech Girls, the American Association of University Women, and the Society of Women Engineers, also known as SWE. In fact, just last month, we started our own SWE Next club. SWE Next is a way for girls to become a part of the SWE community through the age of 18. SWE Next focuses on the development of leadership skills to succeed in STEM fields. We are the fifth SWE Next club in the state, and this program directly aligns with our goals in First Robotics and our First Like a Girl initiatives. We welcome all girls and non-binary to join our club, regardless of their participation on our robotics team. We hope to organize more panels so women can talk about their experience in STEM and connect our members with real-world people and problems. We have a lot of plans to help educate Clayton and Johnston County students on STEM topics, but again, we need funding for our initiatives and getting the word out to parents, community leaders, educators, lawmakers, and people that want to support these programs and our community, and we're hoping you can help us. Any questions?
Wow. How do you say no? Yeah. No, I just want you to know that I think this is amazing.
Thank you.
And the three of you and your team, you should be so proud of yourself for what you stand for and how you present yourself and what you're into. It's awesome. And, you know, I'm just kind of blown away, so thank you for this. Any other comments? Mr. Thompson?
I just want to say, excuse me, I just want to say that this is one of the most professional, well-put-together presentations that we've received in a long time, and we get people with very advanced degrees come before us and make presentations on a regular basis, but this was professional, concise. We understood your message. And sometimes, things that get presented to us are highly technical, and we just kind of have to trust who's standing there, that what they're telling us the truth, but I think what you presented us tonight is very understandable, and we can relate to it, and I think others watching can relate to it. You know, and I'm proud of you, appreciative for you, and appreciative for our library, for what they do to support you. And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I think we need to do what we can do to support you funding-wise, but also, you know, you talk about needing help getting the word out. You know, we've got a public information department, and, you know, I think that if you let Joy know what you need in that respect, she might can help coordinate some things and maybe get our public information department to help you with some of your marketing. I think that because it reflects great on us when you're successful.
That would be great. Thank you.
Mr. Sam?
Yes, I just want to say that what you see here this evening, I've been blessed and lucky enough to have seen it over the past few years through the Clayton Rotary Club. These young ladies are absolutely amazing. This is just a small piece of what you're seeing, actually having them do some of the robot demonstrations, those things like that, but think of how much of empowerment that it does for these young ladies. But think of how much of empowerment that it does for these young ladies. Can you actually picture and envision them five to 10 years from now as they're standing in front of us right now and presenting? It is truly, truly an outstanding organization, and I hope we continue to support it in different ways.
Thank you.
I want to say, I want to say this is fantastic. I have a seven-year-old. She loves Legos. She loves some of the very same things that you're talking about. She's already smarter than me, and 10 years from now, who knows? It's even, it's going to be even scarier. So, I'm very happy they're doing this, and I'd be willing to think the town would be willing to support it, or I would.
Mr. Everett?
I will be the last one, but are you guys running for council in the next couple of years? I think we need somebody like you guys. I think this was the most creative, oh my goodness, I love it. This is awesome, and leading us into the future, you guys are definitely taking us there. Thank you guys so much for this presentation.
Thank you.
So, Mayor always has the final word. So, here's the deal. With every request comes negotiation, right? So, I think we could all be about the $2,000 in exchange for the opportunity for you to come back and bring the robot.
Yes, we would love that.
Yes, because you know, even though we're all elected officials, we're still kids at heart, so we would totally be into that.
Yeah, we would love to do that and demonstrate the robot here.
Yes. Perfect. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
And I think it's fair to add for the record that not only are we, the Town of Clayton, going to continue to support this, but we're going to encourage other people and organizations to encourage, to help out with the funding for this type of programming so we can really see it grow. Yes, awesome. Next on the agenda is the Clayton Chamber of Commerce Town of Clayton Development Forum.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Town Staff. Thank you for putting me on the agenda after those fine-lined young ladies. We will not talk about what I was doing at their age because it does not compare favorably, so I'll leave it at that. Before getting started on the chamber proposal, I wanted to digress for a minute. I'm going to ask for your consideration. I wanted to take this opportunity as one of the two Rotary co-chairs for the Christmas Parade to extend our formal thanks to the Town of Clayton for all the support, collaboration in order to pull off this year's parade, particularly after a two-year lapse due to COVID. So, it would not be possible without the town. It went extremely well. I personally was nervous all day, waiting for the shoe to drop, but it never dropped. Special thank yous to the chief back here. The police department did an exemplary job with everything, and he gets special kudos because I believe it was his idea to shut down the left-turn lane off of 70, and that made a huge difference. Councilman Sims can attest to that as he was there. Unfortunately, for the last time, I will certainly miss him at the entrance to the school grounds. Also, thank you to Amy Sheeran. We can't do it without her. She is a phenomenal liaison with the club in making things happen. And to all the, all the people in the police department, fire department, public works, parks and rec, it doesn't happen without their support and collaboration. So, this is our formal thank you for all that they do, and we're looking forward to January where we're going to regroup and figure out what we can do to make it even better going forward. So, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll put on my chamber hat, and I'm here as the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. And I recently heard something from a client in the past week, and he said, "If you bring me problems and you don't bring me solutions, you're just annoying me by complaining." So, we've heard a lot over the last couple of years in particular, in terms of the whole development process and what's going on, and there's frustration because things don't always go the way everybody would like. And I would say that would be both from the developer's standpoint and from the town's standpoint. So, the question is, how do we make it better? And we firmly believe that that begins with communication, as do most things, and that we need a forum to do this. Interestingly enough, I don't know how many of you saw in the Triangle Business Journal on Friday, there was an article entitled, "Towns/Cities Must Approve or Deny Real Estate Requests Faster." If you haven't seen that, I'll be happy to pass it on and let you read it, but Clayton is not alone. The growing pains that the region is experiencing is putting pressure on the system, and a lot of people are getting frustrated, and it's also driving up costs. And I think that's a concern as well as the needs not being met in a timely fashion. So, with that, I believe you've all received a copy of the proposal, what we're doing here. And again, there's two versions. You've got an early version with your initial packet and then a second version. Just to let you know, we're listening. Interim Town Manager Kupola had some concerns in terms of clarification, so we made some adjustments there in terms of this group participating in the Uniform Development Code rewrite, but not being the steering committee, so we just wanted clarity there. And we also wanted to broaden the definition of the group participating from the development side, that it was really development stakeholders. We were afraid the term developers was too narrow and could easily be misperceived as referring to big development entities, but we want to include people that are maybe one-time developers. Sandy Stevenson and his project would be a good example. There are smaller projects going on, and those people have less experience, less resources, and we believe this forum is a way for them to be heard and for all of us to hear, you know, what are their concerns? So, that was the two major changes to the document was to reflect that broadening of the group. With that, I'm going to mention one more thing and then answer any questions you may have, because hopefully it's pretty self-explanatory, and that is, this really comes from the seed of something that was started pre-COVID. Our 2021 Citizen of the Year, Ruth Anderson, who's not here tonight, unfortunately, a little under the weather, but she started something when she heard some of those complaints a few years back with Adam Lindsay at the time, and Rich was also a participant in that as well. But bringing together some of the folks we're talking about tonight to talk about how can things go better. So, it was really that that we're building upon in terms of moving forward and expanding it. So, this is not something new. It's something that had an early start and now is hopefully the seed that's going to blossom into something bigger and more effective. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. We're looking forward to getting started in January, and we're bringing it here to you as mayor and council with the hope that we have your endorsement and support going forward for this collaboration.
Awesome. Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Porter?
Are there some examples of other municipalities that have done something like this or very similar?
To my, the best of my knowledge, interestingly enough, in the article in the TBJ, they reference that at this point, the city of Raleigh is trying some initiatives. So, actually, I see this as an opportunity to be the leader in the region, doing something and being out ahead of the curve rather than following. So, and again, I think the timing is right to do this, and the more we accomplish now, the easier it gets down the road for everybody, and hopefully, the ultimate beneficiary should be the public if we do this well.
True. Ms. Archer?
Yeah, I had one more question. So, I know in the past, we were doing these developer breakfasts. Is this going to take place in lieu of this, or what's the thought process?
Yeah, so I think the intent from our standpoint, the developer's breakfasts that we haven't been able to have really since COVID started, those would kind of go away, and this would kind of replace that opportunity to have a conversation. Those developer's breakfasts, while we were able, from a staff standpoint, to be able to get information out to the development community, it felt more like presentations and information transfer that way. I think the intent here is to have it be much more of an open dialogue, to be able to discuss kind of the needs for both sides and to find whatever that best-fit solution is. So, the intent would be, you know, if this works out, that this replaces those developer breakfasts.
Cool. Ms. Archer?
Thank you for being here. I really, really liked the write-up. I thought there was a lot of good things in there. And two questions. I wanted to say first that it mentioned well-planned and managed growth, which I was happy to see in the goals, just because that's a lot. I know a lot of Clayton residents have that concern as well. I think my favorite thing in it was the understandable processes and flow charts. I think that flow charts are kind of my thing, and good guidance documents can go a long way to helping these processes unfold better. But my question was, the first one, since obviously the goal is to include town staff, and that's work hours, and that's taxpayer dollars to pay them to go to this, I wondered if there was any possibility of doing it as a three-to-six-month trial period at first, just so we can kind of get feedback and make sure that it's time well-spent, in other words. And then the second question I had was just the nature of this relationship, development community, regulatory body, you know, sometimes that can be contentious. I think there's a lot of great people involved in this. I don't expect that to be a problem, but if so, are there like ground rules for communication or maybe the possibility of having a moderator or something like that?
Okay, so, there was a lot in there, Ms. Archer. Thank you. I'll try to remember all the questions.
I can boil it back down.
I may need help as I go along. I'm not one of those three young ladies, so.
I heard flow chart, and I got really excited, so.
So, on the flow chart, just one comment. I don't know because I'd not seen one before, but Ben sitting over there, Howell, the planning director, but I just saw something recently that included a flow chart that came through, so I was also very pleased with that because it did help to illustrate things. So, in terms of the trial period, I think this whole thing is a trial. So, we talk about accountability in this document and communication back to everyone, including all of you, and the intent is that we monitor, is this moving forward? So, you know, is it moving forward in the right way, in a productive way? Is it yielding results? Personally, for me, I hate doing things, I don't want to meet, talk about stuff, come back the following month, meet and talk about stuff, and no action's taken, nothing moves forward, and nothing is produced. Time is our most valuable resource. As someone told me a long time ago, you can always make more money, but you cannot make more time. So, for me personally, as someone, again, not as young as the three ladies that spoke before, I have a heck of a lot less time to spend on anything anymore, so that would be the hope. As far as the moderator, you're looking at him right now, so that's the goal that I'm going to take on as Chair of the economic, or the role that I'm taking on as Chair of the Economic Development Committee. If you read the last paragraph in the document, I can sum that up in a fewer words, and that is, if you don't play well with others, you can't stay. So, it's that simple. We are looking for a collaborative approach, and again, there's room for healthy disagreement amongst intelligent people, but with that comes the respect when there is disagreement, and when you walk out of the room, the hope is that everybody's, you know, all marching to the same tune, healthy debate to get there, but then we've got to move things forward. So, and if we can't, then maybe that's an answer in and of itself. If there's disagreement, you know, where do we go from here? And the last part is measurable results. So, one other comment before I forget. This does not represent my thinking. This is the collective thinking of a lot of people, including town staff. Both Rich and Ben were part of reviewing the document and draft stages, so we wanted town, you know, participation in development of this. Ruth and I, Ruth Anderson and I both met with those gentlemen as well as part of this discussion. A lot of people from the development community had input to this, and, you know, it is collective thinking here in this document, not one person's thinking, and hopefully, that continues to go forward and make this a successful program. Other questions?
You got it all. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I think it's a really good idea. I think I like the collaborative part of it. I definitely think, you know, it's a two, this is a two-way conversation, and I hopefully I'm, I'm trust you enough that you can, that'd be the case, and, I mean, I'd be supportive of it, especially, you know, based on what you've presented to us.
Thank you.
I think hearing that you got some collaboration going with the town staff, I feel a little bit more comfortable with it, just being very transparent. I was a little concerned that this thing could turn into, I still see the benefits of it, huge benefits from it. I don't want it to get turned into a beat-up session, if you understand what I mean by that. So, I think having you at the helm, as Andrea stated, Councilwoman Andrea stated that, you know, a moderator, somebody to keep this thing moving forward in a positive way, and I feel a little bit more comfortable with it.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Yeah, in terms of that part of it, yeah, this is not a head-hunting expedition. This is about improving, exactly as it says, processes, getting definable results, and where everybody knows where we're going, and it makes it easier and beneficial for all.
I agree. All right. Hold on.
That was a struggle. Just one question, Mr. Jim. With these dinners, the small developers, are these like, these are newer, these are new developers, correct? Or is it existing and new?
It's going to be, so we're gonna, two things. One, we're going to invite a large number of people. We want anybody that's been doing some sort of development in the community, in the Clayton area, so. And that includes people that are professionals that may not be doing it directly themselves, but for somebody developing a project, architects, engineers, people that are always interfacing with the town in terms of a lot of what's being done. So, and again, new and existing, in the area, local and out of the area. We look to have them all participate, and it's not only by invitation, but by request. If somebody hears about it and wants to participate, they're welcome to join us, long as they play by the rules.
I don't necessarily think a motion is necessary. I would just say, do we have consent for this to have our endorsement and to move forward? I'm excited about it. I think it's going to open up the floodgates of communication so that I can find out, the town can find out what the struggles are and challenges from development perspective, development can find out what the challenges and perspectives are from the town, and how do we move it all forward and make it a positive experience for everybody so the development community is getting what they need and the town is getting what they need. And I think it's the first time that I know of that this type of concept has been in Clayton, and I think it's got a lot of value to it, and I'm looking forward to where it goes and what happens. Yeah.
We're excited as well, and we believe the chamber is in a good position to facilitate this, and since the chamber doesn't do development itself, it's really how we're approaching it. So, I thank you all for your time this evening. Again, thanks for all the support, and you will be getting information, feedback on every step of the way as this moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is a preview of the new Town of Clayton website.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Very excited tonight to finally bring you guys the new Town of Clayton website. And so, before the big reveal, though, I want to do essentially what, in the words of Chief Barbie, give you a little history on this thing. So, starting out, you know, our contract with RTS ended in 2020. That was Real-Time Solutions. That's who our website was with. We were with them for several years, and when that contract ended, it really was time to start reviewing the town's website needs. So, one of the big reasons for the change is the backend of the So, one of the big reasons for the change is the back end of the old site was Flash-based. And now, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that or not, but in December of 2020, Flash was nixed. It's no longer supported. It had a lot of issues, security, compatibility, and things like that. So, when that happened, we were kind of in a little trouble, and we needed a workaround. And with that, Kathy Maricini, who was interim PIO at the time, and also Andrew Mallory, they found a way to work it around and keep the site alive by using a portable browser. We won't go into that, but it helped us to get through to where we are now. And so, just before we go, a big shout-out to Kathy. If she hadn't have done the work that she did on the back end to get the ball rolling before I got here, we would not be launching a new site tomorrow. We would be much further down the line. So I just want, I know she's not on the team anymore, but I want to give her a big credit where credit is due.
Awesome.
So, that brings us to Spring 2021. We have signed a contract with Civic Plus, and we are ready to get the ball rolling. So, up first would have been research. So, what we did is we looked at other surrounding municipalities. We looked at Apex, Holly Springs, Wake Forest, Mooresville, and then a lot of sites that Civic Plus manages around the country. And from there, we did some research. We found the current best practices, and then we really wanted to take all of that information and determine what was going to be best for Clayton. So, once we had that information, next up is design. So, with the design, we had to compile all of that information that we found out. We took it, we shared it with department heads, we shared it with website editors, we shared it with you guys, and we developed a rubric at which we took and we analyzed, like, six or seven sites that Civic Plus manages, and we pulled out, you know, what are, analyzed what are gonna be the best pieces, what's gonna be the best for Clayton. So, the result was a collaborative design with strong aesthetics built just for Clayton. So, then we rolled into data migration. Once the design was signed off, we were ready to start moving the old site into the new. It's much more difficult than it sounds. We had to take a lot of pages and kind of find new homes for them, and really figure out how to bring that buried content up to the front, up to the surface, so we could, you know, begin to, you know, find those things more accessibly. Another piece with migration is Civic Plus gave us a migration team, and they took, they went through every page, every document, and when they brought it over to the new site, you know, they used the current best practices, and they also made sure that content was ADA compliant, which is very important for us in the Town of Clayton. And on top of that, just because we want to continue that moving forward, we also have an online tool through a company called Moncito that will monitor 24/7 any content that we add to the site, and alert us if it is not ADA compliant. It'll also give us real-time results for spelling errors, broken links, so we can really keep the site in tip-top shape. So, then we went on to training. It's just a virtual training. We were only allowed eight participants, so we selected all those with major department head sites, and those that really got into the website on more of a daily basis. And what we're gonna do is, my, the three on my team were trained extensively, so we'll be following that train-the-trainer model to train the rest of the staff. Up next, once we've all been trained, it was time for review. So, we met with every department head, we went through every page, we streamlined navigation, and really resulted in a site with a cleaner look and feel. We're very excited about how this has turned out. So, final step, the launch. That is happening tomorrow at 4:00 PM. At that time, the old site is going to disappear, and the new site's gonna begin to take over. Now, it won't be instantaneous. It could take, you know, up to 24 hours for those cache pages to kind of clear out, but you'll begin to see the new site starting about 4:00 PM. So, moving forward. Now, we know with any big endeavor like this, there's always gonna be growing pains. There are gonna be things that we missed, but we really feel like with all the backend work we've done, working with the department heads, analyzing all the pages, and really the great job that Civic Plus did, we should only encounter minor issues. And we are open to change, you know, if we feel that something needs to be edited. There's also going to be an online form for the public displayed prominently on the homepage, that will allow them, if they encounter anything that they feel is incorrect, or they can't find anything, they'll be able to send us a note, and that's gonna go straight to my team, and we'll get that remedy quickly. And also, if they ask for follow-up, we'll reach out to them, let them know it's been fixed, and better help them. So, continually, just because the website launches does not mean it's done. We are going to continue to collaborate with all of the department heads, and train their staff, and really just try to take each of those pages and make it the best it can be. And we know there is some work to do there, and that work does take time, and we would have loved to have done that on the old site, but we could not get in it to edit it. It was really just a lie for this past year, unfortunately. But another way we're gonna keep the website fresh is my department's going to hold a monthly website work session to allow different departments to come in and have some time to focus on the website, because if you don't take time to focus on it, we all know what happens. Website always gets put on the back burner, and we don't want that to happen. We want this to be a great communication tool for the Town of Clayton. So, final thoughts before we do the big reveal. The site you're gonna see in just a moment is really version 1.0, but by the end of next week, we could be at version 1.50. You know, just with all the changes, and once the public sees it. So, it's going to be a living, breathing site, but really think of it as moving into a new home. You got a brand-new home, new paint, new walls, but you gotta bring all your old stuff with you. And it doesn't really match, and, you know, you can't get rid of grandma's table until you got something else to put there, and so it's gonna take time. We've gotta go through those boxes, and we've gotta unpack them and see where everything's gonna go. But all the boxes are in the house, I can promise. We just gotta figure out the best way to get them out, so you can find what you're looking for. And really, just make the site a home, you know, for Clayton's residents and the visitors. So, here's the new site. If you can see in the, we've got, right here's the town site, and then you'll see we've got a featured Parks and Recreation site, really bringing that content, because I don't know if you guys remember, Parks and Rec was buried, and we really wanted to bring all of that great imagery, all those great programs, bring it to your fingertips. Same thing for the remodel of the Clayton Center site, and we now have a site devoted to downtown. Just, if it's happening in downtown, it's supposed to be on this website. So, we're really excited to be able to bring that to you as well. Right, I'm gonna click on it, just so you can kind of see a more of a working model. There we go. So, the new site, you can see we've got streamlined navigation. There's not as much text up at the top. Coming, broken it out by departments. We have our business and development pages, our community pages, our how-do-I. A lot of this is what was on the old site, but we've really kind of restructured it and made it much more accessible, a lot easier to find. I don't know if you guys remember the quick links up at the top, the little text pieces. We've tried to bring that down here, so they're now buttons, so you can just see them when you visit the site. And one important thing to notice about this site is it was built with mobile in mind first, because, you know, like, about 80% of our users are mobile first. So, that's why we have the, you know, the search bars in the center, because that creates a more unified experience for everyone visiting the site. And then we'll have, you know, new news highlighted. We'll have featured calendar, and the same is true for our other sites. So, I'll give you a little glimpse into maybe the Parks and Recreation site here. So, I mean, that just screams Parks and Rec, the colors, the background, but same thing. They'll follow our template, those quick links brought out to the front, that news, their calendar of events, so you won't have to go to a printed PDF anymore to find out what's going on. You can actually add it to your phone. So, it's gonna take a little time to get people into practice of doing this and then promoting it, but we really feel like we're gonna have a solid, solid product here in a little bit. But that's really about all I have for the website reveal. Do you guys have any questions, or?
Questions or comments? Ms. Archer?
I love it. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
I just want to say thank you for breaking it down to where we can understand it. You know, so many of these things are so technical, and I feel like this is, I understood everything you were saying. So, if you helped build the site with that in mind, as you just presented to us, I feel like the citizens will understand it as well, and be better served. So, I'm excited. I think you're on the right track.
Thank you, sir. Those three little children inspired me.
Yeah. I think it's wonderful. I think it is so easy to use. Perhaps the most easy-to-use website we've ever had for the Town of Clayton.
Thank you.
You know, great color, great icons, like, everything is just so easy. I love that.
And with the colors on the town site, you know, we pulled those from some of our, you know, downtown events. So, those colors really are Clayton. It's not just something we came up with. They really embody what it is like to live in Clayton.
Yeah, it shows.
Anyone else?
I got one. I got one quick thing.
Mr. Sims?
It looks good. I love it. Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Did, was there any, for user-friendly, did you do any test runs as far as with citizens?
No, sir. That, we'll be doing that. Once it rolls out, it was kind of difficult with the site not being complete. We just actually did finish it this morning, the last of the migration.
Okay.
Awesome. Mr. Everett?
Good, Daniel. I love it. I think it is very, very unique to Clayton, when it comes to being a little bit more user-friendly. The buttons are a little bit more, you know, with it being a little bit bigger, the search bar, everything, it just makes it more easier to navigate. And this is good. This is good work, and I think it just brings it, brings it to modern. It makes it more modern. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. That was our goal. I appreciate that.
It has definitely been worth the wait.
Good, good.
Definitely. All right, anyone else?
Thank you very much.
And your staff.
And everyone for this project. Thank you. And can I just say, while he's teeing this up, it'd be nice if we could have council be a part of some sort of monthly, one of the monthly website workshops, or a workshop for just us, in addition to ongoing for staff, but, you know, just to help get us familiar. That'd be awesome.
Ben?
Good evening. I'll keep this fairly short. This is an annexation of the Sams Express Car Wash site that's currently under development. It's approximately 3.75 acres. It was vacant. It is not vacant any longer, and it's across, approximately across from Walmart on Highway 70 Business. And here's just a map, again, of the property. And so, tonight, we're asking you to hold a public hearing, and then, if so desired, approve the annexation.
All right. This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic, please step forward and state your name for the record. All right, no one willing to speak. I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the council for their discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the annex 2021-108-annex. I'm sorry, adoption of ordinance 2021-12-04. Sorry.
A second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the ordinance 2021-1204. Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next, under Old Business, is the reconsideration of 2021-126 OA Resource Conservation Area Steep Slops Text Amendment.
Mayor, if we can request the council to officially vote to reconsider this item as a first action, and then staff will provide a presentation.
All right. I'll entertain a motion to bring this back up.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to revisit. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Like sign. Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. So, as council just voted to reconsider the previous text amendment, count, staff wanted to bring you some information tonight, and so I will start off, and then I'll call up our town engineer, Joshua Baird. He also has outside expert with us tonight that can also, may be able to answer some questions, provide some information. So, as a reminder, the Unified Code, Unified Development Code Reference is Section 155.500. And again, the revision is to revise the definition of steep slopes required to be protected under resource conservation areas. Just another reminder, resource conservation areas currently now defined as 100-year floodplain, stream buffer areas, and jurisdictional wetlands. As you can see, there's prohibited uses as well in those areas, and the intent, you know, is to protect natural resources, preserve visual and aesthetic qualities of the town, control erosion, slippage, sediment, and sediment runoff into streams and waterways, among other reasons. I wanted to highlight the 2045 growth plan. Previously, I, when this was last brought to council, we did have a slide that had both the 2040 and the 2045. However, the 2045 growth plan has since been adopted, so I am focusing on that. Policy in our 1.1 states, preserve key natural areas while accommodating new development, and the first strategy under that is to continue to discourage development in primary resource conservation areas, defined as floodplains, protected stream buffers, slopes above 20% of at least 5,000 square feet contiguous acres, area, sorry, 5,000 square feet of contiguous area, slopes above 15% within 100 feet of blue line streams and wetlands. And then, as you can see, there's also secondary resource conservation areas that are recommended to also be conserved. And with that, I'll call up Josh, Joshua Baird, our town engineer, to complete the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council, Joshua Baird. I know a lot of this has been previously discussed, but we'll just kind of hit and dig, excuse me, a little deeper, just into the steep slope sides of things. And then I've got some graphics and other here, there's stuff that we can talk through. So, specifically, talking about the steep slopes as a part of that resource conservation area. It's just a, an area that you see a lot in municipal codes, to take and extend that protection past the riparian buffer, past the floodplains, past any jurisdictional wetlands. Those environmental-sensitive areas usually are accompanied as you extend from there, as you extend outwardly from these environmental-sensitive areas, you typically start to see some steep slopes. You actually start to see some grades. So, you often find these in and around the environmental-sensitive areas, riparian buffers. Also, I've mentioned here some rock outcroppings, shallow soils, and also a location where we see a lot of groundwater seeps. Typically, these areas have been undisturbed, and for many years, in their natural state, they're usually typically very, relatively stable. They can become unstable when you have vegetation removal, when you have changes in the upstream drainage basin that may affect the amount of volume of water, or hydraulics of the area, or grading can affect these areas. So, just at a very high level here, just talking through some advantages and disadvantages of initially protecting steep slopes. Advantages are preserving environmental-sensitive areas, so you're creating an additional setback in a built-upon environment to protect these sensitive areas. It's providing additional habitat for wildlife, and you're also preserving existing vegetation in these corridors. Additionally, on the wildlife side, some of the research does point to that there is areas for wildlife to migrate, not just the habitats, but in a built and in a developing environment. When you have some areas throughout the development, it does allow passageways for deer and other Uh, when you have some areas throughout the development, it does allow passageways for deer and other wildlife to, uh, to pass. The, uh, the areas, if they're protected, also just create some open space. It's not listed here. Um, but there's some recreational value. Some would say there's recreational value there. Um, and then also if you think about in terms of protecting them, uh, specifically during the construction phase, uh, if you're not disturbing these, if you're not removing the trees, uh, you do not have, uh, a period of time where these extremely steep slopes are exposed and have no vegetation to hold that soil in place. From an erosion standpoint, the steeper the slopes you have, the more sediment runoff you're going to get and you're going to get more, uh, soil loss on steeper slopes than a more flatter area. The rainwater picks up. There's higher velocities as it's traveling down there. So from a disadvantage standpoint, obviously there's less developable land. So in terms of the developed, uh, area that's available, if you're protecting less units, less commercial, what you can do there on the site. And there are some increased administrative responsibilities, obviously with, uh, enacting additional code and looking at it. And then on the surveyor side to actually go through and analyze where these areas are. Uh, this graphic's been shown before, but it just kind of highlights and I'm, I'm not going to spend a lot of time here, but just the, the different options we have proposed, some options, uh, in the past to planning board for consideration in terms of looking at areas that may be directly connected. Uh, these areas that are not connected, is there benefit there? Uh, also just buffering some of these jurisdictional features. And so we've shown this, um, and I'm gonna pause here. The, this here next slide and, uh, I, I'm not going to take credit for this. We were talking with a consultant earlier who actually started kind of just drawing this out and I was like, actually, that's a good way to kind of show it. So I'm going to just kind of talk through this real quick in terms of, uh, a cross section and try to really get at what are these areas that we're looking, what does the town of Clayton want to preserve? What areas do we want to see? So if you just take a cross section, obviously you showed the high level earlier. If you can imagine the blue area, um, I guess my right, you're right there, uh, is a stream area, the yellow, a riparian buffer that is protected. And then say you've got a slope coming up of 30%, you may have a break and it's levels out some to a 10%, 30% as the code was originally written and how, uh, a few months ago, the code was, anything above 25% slope and greater than 5,000 square feet contiguous area would have been defined as that resource conservation area. And so you can see that those looking at cross, so cross section here, the areas in the shaded pink red there would be those areas. Uh, if we took off and only looked at those that were directly connected, it would just be that section, uh, closest to the stream. It would include the stream, the riparian buffer. And since it's not directly connected, uh, the, the leftmost here would not be a part of that. Uh, just taking it a step further, one of the things we looked at is the 100 feet, you know, 100 feet buffer on these. Uh, and so that might not encompass the entire slope, the entire steep slope, but it would do a portion where it's 100 or some other value, uh, in terms of what that looks like. And then similar there here, you could have something that's disconnected. If we went with the buffered option, then you could have something that's disconnected. So you've got the riparian buffer and then 100 feet from that or whatever that distance may be, uh, a slope of less than the 25%, but then a steeper slope. And so you could still have some disconnection in there. So a lot of different scenarios that could play out. Um, and just want to be able to put this before you and have some discussion there. These five options, again, this is just for discussion, as my understanding, tonight, um, we're open to discuss those or any others. And, uh, we have shown some just benchmarkers, benchmarking that we have looked at in terms of other municipalities on a quick slide there. And then also tonight, um, as Ben had alluded to, um, I did ask Sarah Wykowski to, to come tonight. Uh, she's currently an extension associate engineer at NC State. She is in the biological and agricultural engineering department. A lot of her work focuses on stormwater, water quality and flooding. Uh, she, she has a master's and currently working on pursuing a PhD. And her PhD does focus on erosion downstream and downslope storm outlet pipes. And, uh, she's also a licensed professional engineer. So, uh, between the three of us, we are available and we can take any questions or any discussion that we may have tonight.
Can you put the options back on screen, Delma? Ms. Archer.
I've already forgotten your name, but the extension agent, could I ask a question?
Sarah.
Or either of you that, Ben or you that have been involved with this. So, um, I also heard this, um, as part of the planning board several months ago. And what I was looking for at that time, um, obviously there's state and federal regulations in place that encompass slope and riparian buffers and, and these sort of sensitive areas. And so what I was looking for was something about best practices for ordinances at the municipal level. Because you have these state and federally protected areas, but then steep slopes were kind of passed on to the municipalities to enforce. So I, and I never could really narrow that down to what's a best practice for steep slopes outside of those state and federal areas. Is that something that any of you can speak to?
I'll let you start.
Yeah, yeah, I can start it off and certainly if anything technical, Sarah can speak to. Um, as we discussed, the, the planning board, you know, the, um, the riparian buffers, the floodplains and jurisdictional wetlands are all the typical, the, the state and federal regulations. And the, a lot of, you, you do see this in some municipal codes and it's just an additional step. There, there's not any, to my knowledge, any federal or state requirements for those. Um, and, and really trying to understand, uh, if, if you're going to preserve or keep some additional, uh, natural habitat just from a planning standpoint and looking to preserve some of that character, this is one of those areas that you could define as something to be conserved and set aside. If you're looking to keep some of the more of a natural habitat within the development, why not let it be some of these areas that in, in typical landscapes are in and around some of the riparian buffers, the floodplains or the jurisdictional wetlands. Um, and if you've got anything to add or, or Ben, if you guys want to add anything to that or may not.
Hi, Mayor and, uh, council members. Nice to meet you. Um, while I work for the university, I have not here on their behalf. So I just, legal purposes need to say that. So I will say one of the best management practices that you can do for steep slopes is actually to leave them alone. Um, to let, to have the, to let them have their natural vegetation, um, because they've stabilized on their own. And that's actually, um, one of the practices that you'll see in sediment erosion control manuals is to preserve the vegetated areas, leave them alone. Um, so I think that is the best management practice you can do. There are some other engineered practices that you can do in which, you know, they involve terracing or replacing some of the topsoil with infiltrating soil to allow the water, um, to infiltrate rather than flow down the slope. But really your best option and you would get the most benefit by leaving these slopes as is.
Ms. Archer.
Thank you so much for that. So I think this is helping me piece this together because I have, we've heard from the members of the planning board who heard this, that steep slopes were important to them. Um, I've heard from a lot of residents that are interested in these as well for all the reasons we've discussed. Erosion, habitat, um, natural beauty. Um, it's also in our 2045 growth plan. So I'm more comfortable now that this is something that municipalities do have the right to protect. And there are a lot of people who are interested in protecting these. I think where I'm having the hardest time is when you look at the other municipalities or you look at these options before us, just sifting through what's the best for people who want to, you know, fairly develop their land versus people who value these resources. And because it seems like there's so much variability between the kind of slope and the amount of contiguous area. And, um, and so maybe that's just, that's fine. If the answer is we need to flesh that out and come up with those specifics. I was looking for maybe something a little more research or science based and maybe that's not out there.
I will say we, we certainly have been doing some due diligence and, and digging into, um, time of year, especially in the academic world is a little difficult with end of semester and, um, finals and, and grades and everything. So, um, we, we had made some contacts and I know Sarah has certainly, uh, picked the brain of some in and around, uh, the halls at, at state. Um, and so trying to pull that stuff together. Um, I, I can't say we've stumbled upon a ton of research in terms of looking at this specifically in an urban environment. Certainly there's been a lot of research into slope stability and erosion control and things of that nature. But really trying to gauge and, and find something around what is that balance? Um, I have not necessarily been able to find anything, but again, I know it certainly has been a, a, a short timeframe and, and it may be out there, just have not been able to stand upon it. Um, certainly we've, we've made some, uh, other connections and, and made some other emails and calls into, uh, some other folks in terms of research. Um, again, haven't heard back from some, just time of year and everything. Um, so it is something that still could be out there and we still could be able to provide and just, um, I, I don't have it tonight necessarily.
And I am very pleased with what you've been able to give us and even just the discussion, I feel like is, is helpful as well. So thank you.
Are there some examples or, I mean, I guess other municipalities that don't have some of these, I guess, more stringent regulations? And where they've had failures or challenges or issues, long-term issues, not just temporary, but long-term issues that y'all could maybe speak upon or that's kind of broad, but just?
Yeah. Yeah. I think one of the, one of the risk in protecting some of these areas is you are having, if it's in a developed area and you have adjacent development, you're going to have changes in hydrology just upstream of it. And so that, that, that's one of the challenges. If you're looking to conserve and preserve these areas, everything you're doing even upstream of there or up slope of there can or could have some impact on these, some of these areas. For instance, a, a storm outfall. Um, uh, looking back at one of the, um, the, the recent variances, there was a storm outfall up, upstream of one. Um, it was unstable, likely to do some of those manmade, some of those shifts in it, uh, that affected the natural environment. So there's, there's a, there's a natural aspect of it too. Even if you protect these, there's still changes upstream that could affect it or could have a negative, uh, uh, impact on it. It just depends on if that's where a storm pipe gets dropped, what are the velocities coming out? How much water's coming down through there? How protected is it? So, um, I, I'm not aware of any initially, um, specific, uh, failures in others, but I'm happy to do some research into that as well.
I will, go ahead. I was, um, just sitting here thinking and, and looking back on my notes down here. Is there any value, um, would this council find any value in like using this topic as like one of the first things that we, um, request out of the development stakeholders collaboration forum? Where we could have, they could have these conversations, that type of research could be presented to that group. And then maybe that group could bring some more information back to us. I just think it's a perfect topic for them to get started with. But, you know, it's just food for thought. Ms. Archer.
I do think that would be a good, a good place to start, um, with that group and, and talking that over. My main concern and why I was glad that this got brought up at the last council meeting is that right now the town of Clayton has no steep slope protection in place. Um, obviously there were people who feel that's okay and, and that was why we're at where we're at right now. And, and you know, everyone's entitled to their opinion, obviously, but that does concern me. Um, just how, because this is a priority for me and I think other people who have, who have come to me about it. Um, it's just how long would we get that information from them? And in the meantime, kind of what's at, what's at risk? But I do think that would be a good place for that to be discussed.
I also think that's where, you know, if we go for more stringent or we keep what we have or whatever, whatever we decide to do needs to be transparent for the development community. So it makes sense and they understand what they're having to deal with, of course. And then secondly, it needs to be something that the town staff can fairly simplistically enforce without having to require a lot of manpower and extra, you know, time and such. But, I mean, y'all are the experts and so please inform us if there's one, if you have something that's, you know, going to be more challenging or, you know, I'm assuming there's a lot of technology out there as well, but that's just kind of my thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, they, they all have their advantages and disadvantages in terms of these options. And if I'm not mistaken, I mean, we're open to, if there's other things that seem to work better. I mean, I, I think we threw some options out there. Um, certainly, um, there's some analysis that goes into it. Uh, it's required on the developer side in terms of a surveyor, uh, running some, uh, information through CAD system in terms of what that surface, what that topo looks like and being able to come up with these. So, so that, that is part of it, uh, looking at the different areas. Uh, if we're talking to buffer, it's relatively easy for CAD techs to just toss a buffer on there, pass these. They're already delineating these areas. They're already having them in the CAD system. So just go ahead and drop in a buffer on there. Um, then we get to plat time. Uh, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but they are to be platted as part of the plat. So there is some additional work there in terms of reviewing, um, the, if there's, uh, I'll say odd area, odd shaped areas. Certainly putting, um, line work to those is something that take into account, um, in terms of, uh, looking at that and reviewing it. I think it's something that can be done. Uh, but, um, the, the buffer is an easy option. The, looking at the different areas, it, it can be done.
So most of these things can be done from a computer, not actually having to go out on site and spend man hours?
Once the field staff have the survey, yes, sir, that, that then those point files then go into the surface in the CAD and, uh, it's a quick analysis to see what those slopes are from CAD. The groundwork is the surveyors though. Groundworks the surveyors on site.
The only other question I had was, uh, based on the 2045 comp plan, you know, that NR 1.1.1, is there anything that was that one of the options that was reflected or the most closest one?
Uh, excuse me. I don't actually think any of our, the option, frankly, I think the option closest to what's in the comp plan is probably what we used to have in the ordinance. Um, but if you look, I mean, the comp plan actually goes to 20% slopes, which is even a little bit less steep than what we, um, what we had been, what we used to have in the ordinance. So, um, and I did just want to clarify, um, to council member Archer's, um, point. I believe, you know, it could probably take a little while to have this item discussed at the, um, Chamber of Commerce group. But we are prepared. We have, uh, published a, or we will be publishing a legal ad and are prepared to take something to the planning board tomorrow night and actually bring back, um, texts for council to consider adoption on January 3rd. If you wanted to continue moving forward with adopting another text amendment on this issue. So staff is prepared to do that. Um, and that's what we really wanted to come to you tonight is to bring this back forward, bring some additional information and then get guidance from you as to if you do want to see another text amendment to add protection of steep slopes back in the ordinance. And if so, get direction on preferably, you know, either one of the options we provided or an option that you come up with on your own. But give us, you know, some direction so that we can take, take the planning board, one, one tech, proposed text amendment instead of five options and then bring you back one, one proposed amendment, um, instead of five options on January 3rd.
Thoughts? Ms. Archer.
Well, as I prepared for tonight, I, it was hard for me to, to kind of decide what a next step would be. So what, one thing that I was thinking maybe we could ask for would be, um, the slope ordinances from Raleigh, Apex, Holly Springs and Chapel Hill. And the reason for that is because, you know, it just seems like this is one of those things where there are a lot of options. And, you know, I feel like we, this came before us because it is a tricky one and it has to be worded well in a way that makes it easy to implement and for the development community to have something predictable to go by. Um, and I've just thought if we could look at what other municipalities in our region were doing and maybe reach some sort of consensus as a council, it's just a suggestion. I don't know if any other council members would like to see what those municipalities are doing.
I agree.
Um, oh, I'm sorry. For me, um, I think, you know, I don't mind, you know, setting up, uh, developers, you know, kind of having a talk with them and trying to figure out how we can communicate and collaborate. My only thing is it's like, you know, even with that, it doesn't change, you know, the slope itself, you know, it's still going to be a slope, you know, we, we leave it alone. Um, no matter what we do, it's still saying leave it alone. So, um, I know the, the main reason of bringing this up was to, um, basically get some clarity on, um, the conservation areas itself. So, you know, and making sure it's consistent with the rest, rest of the text as well. So, um, yeah. But just going forward, it's, I think it's important that we listen to people that actually deal with these types of things, um, on the daily and lead with that.
Any other questions or comments? So basically what I'm hearing is a request for some additional information from surrounding areas, uh, as, um, council member Archer requested. And should we then just continue this item to the next meeting? Or should we, um, wait to hear back from what happens with the planning board or?
the planning board? Or I'm not sure what the council's wishes are for moving forward.
Could I ask a question about that?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I should know this, but what is the requested action of the planning board tomorrow?
So, because I had to prepare the planning board packet before tonight, we have essentially provided them the same information we provided you tonight and that was provided back in November. The only, I think, really new thing we provided the planning board was the newly adopted ordinance that was adopted on November 15th with the striking steep slope. So, we had I'd set it up so that I could bring planning board a language, you know, that was as based on council direction tonight. However, if council would like to get more information and discuss it further, then I will most likely ask planning board to defer their discussion until we have some more more thorough direction and discussion at the council level.
Fair enough.
Is there anything that's holding? I mean, there's no development. I mean, obviously, we're not holding anything up right now, basically, that's out there.
No, no. I mean, at this point, anything that is submitted, any new development that is submitted is allowed to submit without showing any protection of steep slopes as, you know, conserved as RCA. So, again, you know, I think that's to Councilmember Archer's point, you know, that's the one thing that is that could occur. The longer a decision is is not made on to move forward on a text amendment for this, the longer it holds the door open for a development to come in potentially on an area that could have some steep slopes and not have to protect those.
Yeah, if I could jump in there, I think from a timing standpoint, essentially, if the planning board doesn't hear this tomorrow and provide a recommendation, if it pushes, I guess, to the February meeting, essentially, what you're doing is allowing for additional applications to be submitted on February 1 that would be not subject to any of the any RCA related to steep slopes. So, that's you're really opening it up to one additional application round. Not sure of anything that's in the pipeline currently. I'll have to look to planning and engineering staff that have been involved in the TRC process here as of late. But that would be the result of delaying a planning board recommendation at the next until February.
You said one round? Sorry.
So, as of right now, with the way this timeline's laying out, anything submitted on January 1st or the Monday or the following business day after January 1st currently would not be subject because we would not have council action before then. Delaying that would add one more round of submittals. So, the first meeting, or excuse me, the January 1st submittals and the February 1st submittals would be not subject to any new ordinance.
So, just talking out loud, just to wrap my head around this, I guess, the options we have here would be tonight to recommend language that we would like to see go to the planning board. However, that would require us to kind of comb through the options we have before us and make our best judgment as of tonight of what we think should move forward. Or we just give it this cycle and gather information on other municipalities, look at what else is going on out there, think it through, and then send that recommendation to the planning board at the next town council meeting. Did I get that right?
Yes. Well, and I was also going to say, technically, there's also nothing just, I mean, the there's nothing saying the council couldn't move forward with something tonight to push the planning board and then have a public hearing and potentially adopt on January 3rd and still continue discussion past that time and come back at a later date with another amendment to, you know, clarify or, you know, revise the language yet again once you have more information. It's, I think, really from from staff standpoint, it's, you know, how how much of an issue, how immediate of an issue or concern is this for town council? You know, are you willing to go potentially as as interim town manager Capola said, are you willing to go potentially through February submittals with, you know, no steep slope submittals with no sleep steep slope protection or even longer? Or do you want to get something back on the books to at least provide some some protection in the meantime and then continue discussion and maybe tweak it and and come back with another amendment later on after more detailed discussion and and investigation?
One comment there. I was gonna say, the planning board is a recommendation, correct?
Correct.
So, effectively, you've got five options on the table right now that they could hear tomorrow evening. It sounds like it's the same ones that they've heard previously. I think they've been given the same information in terms of the benchmarking communities. They could review based on that information and provide a recommendation of one of those five coming out of that meeting, much like they did last time. That still allows you all to do your research in addition to that and be able to discuss it at January 3rd. If there are changes you would like to make to any of the recommendations, if you'd like to change it completely, and then at that point, it's up to you all if you want to feel like it needs to go back to the planning board for discussion, or if it needs to go one more meeting in January for additional discussion at the council level, that is an option to be able to move it forward if you want to stay on the same timeframe in terms of having a decision made prior to the February 1 submittals.
And to follow up on interim town manager Capola's comment, I mean, obviously, for for staff, that would be going that way would probably be simplest because we could literally provide the planning board the same presentation we're giving you tonight and have them again, once again, select one of the options to move forward.
And just for my clarification, that presentation to the planning board would be the same presentation they got in October, right?
If we provide this presentation, it would be a little bit different, but very similar.
Did the the October presentation have the five options?
Yes.
And and the notes in the package say that the planning board preferred or recommended option two?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that the same option two here? Or I heard they might have got mixed around. Is that the same option here? Just want to make sure for clarification.
It is the I believe it is the same option two on the screen that it's the option two that planning board recommended in October.
That to me seems like the most straightforward route if my so they could provide us with a recommendation out of tomorrow's meeting. And then that still gives us to the next town council meeting to hear additional information and and hear their recommendation as well and and take action at the next meeting.
And as interim manager Capola said, you also would have the capability of the January 3rd meeting to continue the public hearing to the next to the January 17th meeting, I believe it is, and make a decision there. And you would still have a decision made before the February submittals window.
Sounds good to me.
I'm good with it.
Okay. All right. That's our plan of action.
All right.
Wonderful. Thank you, Steph. Yes, thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Okay. Up next under new business is the 2021 record retention schedule.
Yes, the 2021 record retention for the local government has recently approved by the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources. Updated schedule, I'm providing guidance related to record retention, some of the improvements that you'll see in this schedule that we are broken out now from the state and municipal governments as their own record retention schedule. Another improvement that you'll see is in their actual record retention, they have a little lock icon. So, it just gives you a like warning sign, wait, this could be confidential. It might not be subject to record. The reason that so it's an excellent way for quite a while. Again, it was recently adopted and they're asking only as well as adopted at this time.
All right. Questions or comments from council? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the adoption of the 2021 general record retention schedule.
Second?
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of the 2021 general record retention schedule for local government. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like son. Motion carries. Jumping down to staff reports, beginning with the manager.
Mr. Mayor and council, a couple of things real quick. One, Mr. Pericone discussed it earlier today, but I just did want to say that the parade was was an extremely successful event. Just want to thank all the staff that worked on it. We pretty much hit, it feels like almost every single department in town had some hands in helping make sure that was a successful day. And, you know, the weather was fantastic, and I think everybody enjoyed it. So, we just really appreciate everything they did. Also, didn't get a chance to thank Nathaniel during his website presentation, but between Nathaniel and Nader and Cat and all the rest of the, you know, the staff that were involved, there were a lot of cats to hurt on this one. And you can imagine the riveting information that they found on the pages that they got to read over and over again throughout that process. So, just really want to say thank you for you guys, for your efforts there, and real excited about how tomorrow's going to go with the final unveil for the public. One item that I had hoped to be giving an updated change to our policies with regard to COVID prior, you know, going into the new year. Obviously, there's an Omicron variant that is floating around now that we're still trying to understand. So, I just wanted to reiterate that our policies will stay in place at least through the new year with regards to mask mandates for both the public and staff within our buildings. After the first of the year, we will obviously reevaluate based on whatever the numbers are showing at that time with hopefully, you know, fingers crossed, we can we can have some have some changes coming sometime early in the new year. But with that, kind of just wanted to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, Happy New Year to everybody. Hope you have a safe, safe holiday season here and looking forward to working with everybody in the new year. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Happy holidays to you and your family. Town attorney?
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. That's the extent of my report.
Excellent. Town clerk?
Thank you.
Other staff?
Mayor and council, you'll notice that I have a coat on because I'm from Alabama, and this is the north. I'm very cold. Just a couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention. So, at our last council meeting, Mayor Pro Tim Thompson asked for me to look at the library fees at the library. Specifically, he didn't say this, but specifically the $25 out of town fee. We could look at all fees and get rid of all of them, but we'll start with the $25. I just want to let you know that I'm working on this. I don't have a presentation or a recommendation for you tonight. I just was gonna tell you a little bit about the facts that I'm gathering so that if there's anything else you'd like for me to present to you next month, I can do so. So, I am currently mapping users who haven't renewed since 2015. There are over 10,000. I'm looking at users who haven't renewed between 2015 and 2018, and then between 2018 and now. Typically, with your annual statistical report, you use your active users and you go back three years. That's why I have those kind of demarcations. I'm also looking at the grant revenue we've gotten from the state, which is one of the benefits that we got from pulling away from the Public Library of Johnston County in Smithfield. I'm looking at the money that we get in state aid annually, donation revenue, revenue from cards that from people paying for the $25 cards, and then spending a good amount of time on public response. That is something that we get every single day without fail. In fact, twice in the last week, I've had people say, no, I'm not going to get that card. It's too much. So, just looking at the public response and whether having that out of town fee is worth the cost that it takes to enforce the fee and whether we're turning so many people away if that's if that's a wise decision on our part to say goodbye to that fee. So, as I pull this information together, I'll be creating some information to send out to you. But I'd like to know if there's any further information that you'd like so that you can make the best decision. I see the mayor's taking some notes, so check out for me.
Mr. Thompson?
I just want to say thank you for working hard on this. One of the things that I've heard over consistently is the same things that you're hearing, you know, people that live close to our library saying, I'm having to go to Smithfield to the library. I'm taking my kids to Smithfield to the library because, you know, it's $25 to get a card in Clayton. And, you know, when you look at the benefit versus the loss there, you know, if they're going to Smithfield to buy their dinner, to buy gas, to do those things, you know, what are we gaining by doing that $25 fee for people that live out of town? You know, is that really worth it? And I like what you're saying that you're getting this information together for us because I think that's how we can make an informed decision as a council is, is there a benefit or not? And I think your data will show us where we need to go with that. And that's really where I wanted to go. That's why I brought it back up and why I wanted us to to get a good presentation from Joy on, you know, is there benefit or not? And, you know, are we turning people away that we should have in town? And I think for me, the last thing, the library is a place for learning. This isn't like Parks and Rec. It's different. This is a different beast. And I think, you know, if you want to play on a ball team, you know, you pay to participate in sports. That's just something that people do. For learning, I just don't see that that should be a pay to learn type of thing when you're dealing with a public library. And that's why I brought it up. Another reason is when I see if we've got kids that go to, say, a Riverwood school, and one lives in town and one lives across the street, not in town, and they want to work on a project, both kids should be able to come to our library and work on that project and work together. And that's really where I wanted to go with this. And, you know, when you really step back and look at it, is there a benefit or not of us doing this? And are we turning away people? And are we preventing learning opportunities? Because I have no doubt that Johnston County has a good public library, but I know ours is the best. And I know I'm partial, but I know ours is the best. And I think that's why I brought this up. And I'm pleased that you're going to bring us. I feel like you're going to bring us the information we need to make a good decision.
Some of the data for the 27520 zip code of people who are out of town is is pretty compelling. So, we had several thousand users who are from the zip code, and that's I'm getting GIS to run some maps so they can show us if they're in town or out of town. And that's really interesting to just see the zip code breakdown for people who are really right down the road, but would have to drive all the way to Smithfield for free library service.
I couldn't agree more with what's been stated, but I do want to simply say this from a business perspective. I want to make I want to I want to know if there's any information out there that would tell you as a library director, if the number of people that we suspect are not paying the $25 were participating in library activities, how much more staff, how much more staff time, how much more space like would be required if that is brought into the picture or was brought into the picture? Because while I'm happy that we can help, and I believe that we need to, I also want to make sure that that decision is not going to make it so cumbersome on the library staff and the budget and where we are. Does that make sense? I just want to I want to know that, yeah, we need to do this. It's not really about the 25 bucks. It's about offering some service. But at the same time, I don't want us to like shoot ourselves in the foot by not knowing that this will make for increase of staff time, use of space, all of that. And how do we work with that?
I think an important thing to keep in mind there is that there are a number of times that across the street, staff isn't being fully utilized because we're slower. We've seen a major downtick since 2015 in use of the library during programming times and in regular times in pre-COVID, it wasn't as pronounced. But post-COVID, we have seen fewer people in the library. And I don't know that our staff is being used as much as we could be. But because of our staffing model, we have a lot of people on because our desks are so far apart. For safety, we've got to have a lot of people in there. For my part, I want us to be busier, honestly, and I think this would make us busier. But I agree, I don't want to make it so that we can't function in a day. I think that we're at an interesting intersection of our building's layout puts us with a lot of people there. Because we have so many people there, we need to really justify having those people in those seats and pulling people in from in town and out of town. Some of the outreach that we would do in town to schools, for instance. So, if I go to West Clayton Elementary, or if I go, actually, Riverwood's a great place, or Powhatan, Powhatan where my daughter went to school. If I go to Powhatan Elementary and do a back to school night, join the library, but happy it got a pay, that's a really hard message. And so, being able to better do outreach, go into schools where my message is, you're one of us, come on in, that's a thing, too. So, maybe people who are in town, who we would be reaching regularly, we're not hitting as much with our outreach because our message is divided. And so, if I have a unifying message... And so if I have a unifying message, then that pulls in our in-town people as well as our out-of-town people. You also don't have out-of-town people giving us the bad press that keeps the in-town people from coming because that press is real. And so I hear you, and I want to be, I want to honor what you're saying, but I also think that we have crippled ourselves a little bit, or not crippled ourselves, I don't want to be, but we've made it, there's a lot more words that we've got to use. And what happens when people are using a ton of words with you? Squirrel, right? Like, you know, we get lost in it. And so we're really trying to unify, simplify that message, unify it. And I think that our benefit is going to be more in-town residents, but that's what this data that I'm going to get for you is going to be. And trying to do this in a way that doesn't overstress us, that brings back some of the vitality that people saw before, helps us rebuild after COVID, and just helps us move forward.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
I think I have a quick question.
Sure.
I'm just curious, how much revenue are we talking about here?
The five-year average from 2016 to 2020 was about $16,000 a year. That's a small number. I mean, it's a great number, but it's not, it's not a major portion of our budget.
Awesome. All right. Any other staff?
Mr. Mayor, Chief Tart, and then Patrick have items for tonight, just three of yours here.
Awesome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is the week of Christmas, as was mentioned earlier. I want to make you aware that tomorrow and Wednesday, in partnership with Walmart, we'll be going out doing our Shop With A Cop program. I want to recognize a couple of people who are here. Meredith Monford, who's my administrative assistant. Larry Lopez, who, if you've been to the police department, meets you, greets you at the door. Over the past couple of weeks, they have gone out and purchased over 200 gifts and wrapped them. And we will be delivering those gifts tomorrow and Wednesday to 26 kids here in the community. A lot of these kids have been involved in cases that we have worked or been involved in. Meredith and I will be going up Wednesday to Wake Med Rehabilitation Center to meet with Jada Miller, who was the young lady hit out on Willmore Road back in September, and she's now paralyzed and taken our presence as well. So I just wanted to make you all aware of what we're doing here and recognize these two women for their dedicated efforts over the past couple of weeks. So thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Good evening, Mayor. Town Council, I just want to take one minute to recognize our DDA award winners. We had our fantastic event here. First, my first one in person, which was amazing last week. Thank you to those that could make it. And just really appreciate also the partnership with the Chamber because we've combined this with WIN Rotary and the Chamber as part of their annual award. So it's a great, rather than having four or five different Christmas and annual awards meetings and holiday meetings, we get to have one, which I think is a great celebration. So our best new business of the year was Moveology, which is down there at 215 on Main Street. Our best downtown contributor was Erin Belcher with Dylan's. She's everywhere all the time, really appreciate her. Best downtown design was the Barber Building. We recognize the entire building for all the remodel, not only the new tenants and the landlord and their architects. So Atlas Stark, August Construction Services, Lewis Cherry Architecture, Crawford's Cook Shop and the Cardinal, but also want to make sure to recognize Hair on Main because they've been a longtime staple there. They could have easily said, take a hike and go somewhere else. They stuck with downtown, they stuck with the landlord and the location through all that construction. So very important. And last, the best business of the downtown business of the year was the Market at Three Little Birds. So we're thankful for all of our businesses in downtown and throughout the town, and just love the opportunity to be able to recognize those, the DDA to be able to do that at their awards meeting. Just wanted to have a second to celebrate that and just thank you and Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all of you.
Thank you, Patrick. Any other staff? All right. If not, I'll open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak?
My name's Johnny House. I think probably Jody, are you the only one that was here when I done the presentation back in 2018, 2019?
Jason was here.
Jason was here?
Mm-hmm.
Just since y'all have got the pictures, the first picture is what existed before any construction. Well, let me introduce myself. I'm Johnny House. I live at 2975 Cover Bridge Road, Clayton, beside the Walton Farm Development. The first picture is was my driveway and ditch before any construction started on Walton Farm. Okay? Second picture was the first flooding event. And I didn't look, I got tons of pictures. The third picture is after the DOT come out and cut a four-foot ditch across the front of my property. The ditch collapsed due to the stormwater erosion out of Walton Farm. Okay? And the fourth picture you see is the complete project. After everybody's finished, the DOT's left and gone. I've still got water coming out of the ditch, coming across my property, mine and my mother's property. Okay? That's just the explanation of the pictures. I'm kind of glad I come tonight because of steep slopes. You don't have to have steep slopes to have erosion. It's what you, it's evidence of what you're looking at right in front of you. Because I've got it. Like I say, I live next door to Walton Farm Development. I have a water problem from the amount of stormwater that's been released out of Walton Farm into the road ditch. The Fred Smith Company started this work on the road, 12-4, 2019. On 12-13-19, that's the second picture in there that I showed you, was my first flood event out of Walton Farm Development. 11-14-20, I had a mud event, I mean, another flood event where silt, sand, everything exceeded the top of the silt fence, come down my driveway, was all over my front yard, all over my concrete patio, everything. They had to come in and power wash, clean, do everything. From 8:20 through 10:26, 20, I've had at least nine flooding events due to the stormwater runoff out of the Walton Farm Development. On three of those separate occasions, I had water underneath my house from this event. Up to six inches of water up underneath my house. And it's a flat area where I live at right there. On 10/26, the NC DOT replaced the 15-inch road tile. And I've lived there since 1984. I've never had a problem flooding out of the ditch. They replaced it from a 15-inch to a 24-inch road tile. And in the process of doing that, they dug a four-foot ditch from my house down to 2873, which is my mother's house, and about 100 foot on the other side of her driveway. On 11/16/20, the ditch eroded, which I think is the third picture I showed you in there. The DOT had to come back from the amount of stormwater that's coming down through this ditch and redo the ditch, get the seal out of it and rock the ditch to the left of my driveway coming out of Walton Farm to keep it from collapsing. It had gotten so bad that it was eroding up under the asphalt on Cover Bridge Road. That's how much water comes down this ditch. We, the Johnston County taxpayers, have paid every bit of the expense to clean this ditch out so far. Town of Clayton, developer ain't spent a dime. Taxpayers have. On 8/5/21, the water come out of the ditch again, which is the fourth picture I showed y'all. And I had Susan Lockler out since she's a new stormwater person out, rose control. I had her out to show her where the water had come out, plus I've got pictures of it. She did come out and verify and acknowledge that, yes, the water had come out of ditch again. And it also was in the travel lane of Cover Bridge Road. And I have videos of that showing people driving down from Archers Lodge back into Clayton, hitting the water that's halfway into the westbound travel lane of Cover Bridge Road. And then, mind you, these events that we've had is from one, three, or four inches of rain over this timeframe. We've been fortunate to have a hurricane where we had 10 to 21 inches of rain. When Hurricane Floyd came through, we had 21 inches of rain. With that little small ditch, that first picture you saw, I never had a flooding problem. And here's one of my concerns. The farmland out there absorbed the water. They never released it into the ditch. I've got videos from the Noose River to the curve of the Purons showing that when it's raining, the only water visible is coming out of the Walton Farm Development, causing this stream flow coming down there. There is none on the other side of ditch, none above it or anywhere else. Getting off track. I don't know how much y'all are around construction. Are y'all around construction much? My first question is, what do you think happens when you strip all the topsoil away from the farmland? Perfect example, drive a steeplechase. Take a look at it. It's in the process of happening right now. They're taking and compacting everything with clay. The road, the lots, the valley ditches, everything is being compacted with clay. What is clay? Clay is a compatible surface that's being compacted, probably just about as much as asphalt. You take and put a house, put downspouse and gutters on it, and then you've probably got 300 or 400 foot of grass around your house. You've got a total impervious surface that does nothing, but hits the drains and runs off. I mean, you've increased from a farmland to a development a tremendous amount. And I would ask that gentleman right there to come up with some numbers and show me how Walton Farm got passed with this amount of release into the state road ditch in front of my house. I only see one solution to it. I've been through the process. I've worked with the individuals that's been out there over the last two years. The state has washed their hands of it. They say they're through with it because it wasn't their problem to begin with, they're just reacting to the situation that's happened afterwards. So where am I at? What is going to happen to me and our property when we get the 20 inches of rain? What is my protection? To me, the water should have never been put in the ditch to begin with, and to me, the water should come out of the ditch. Because the one thing that DOT told my brother, my brother's on the receiving end down at the end, all this water runs through his yard, across his yard and into the creek. Well, there is no DOT easement on his land for that water to cross. So his suggestion was, why can't I put me in a road tile here and y'all truck that water right to the river? You know what NC DOT told him? Any comments? It was against the law. You can't have put that amount of water in a ditch and send it down across those people that have property along Cover Bridge Road. So my question to him was, how in the world can you allow Walton Farm Development to put this amount of rainwater, stormwater in my ditch and run it across the front of our property, damaging our property? I'd like to know what the town is going to do about it. And that's why I'm here tonight. I'll be glad to field any questions y'all may have.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Thompson?
Well, first of all, if it was me, I'd be mad as fire, and I'm still mad as fire. Situations like this, and yours isn't the only one that we've seen like this, you know, what it does is it throws up to me that the decisions that we made and that the things we voted on, on this side of this desk, have negatively impacted people. And it makes me mad. And it makes me regret a lot of the decisions we've made because of it. One thing that I did recently, I had an opportunity to ride with Chief Barbie to look at some of the construction going on. And I think that's something that in my entire time on the council, I've never had a staff member say, let's go ride and look at what's being built. Let's look at how this construction's going on. And I challenge those of you sitting beside me to take that same ride. Because what the developer or their designated stands on the side of that podium and says, we're going to put a berm here, well, what's a berm? And what does it look like? I think what we're told and what actually gets put in place are two different things. And what we're told and what our perception of barriers and berms and natural ways for water to flow, there's a reality that that water's going somewhere and it's negatively impacting people. And for one, I'm sorry, because when I see situations like yours, I know that it's the ones like me sitting on this side of this desk that made the decisions that led to that. And I'm sorry. But I do challenge those of you sitting up here beside me, get with the chief or get with any town staff member, and go out and ride and look at this stuff. I want you to see the things that we have approved and the plans that were given to us, saying these are solid plans, this is going to work, this is the way it's going to be, and, you know, nobody's going to be impacted by this. There's a presentation, and then there's a reality. And Mr. House has showed us the reality. And I just challenge those of you sitting beside me, take that ride, go out and look at this stuff and see it firsthand because what we're told and what really happens has been two different things over the last few years. And I just want to tell you, from my standpoint, I'm sorry.
Anyone else? Mr. Casey?
I've been on that ride, and it's pretty eye-opening and it's pretty sad, honestly. But is there not, I'm not expert on this, but is there no stormwater retention pond? I mean, I don't know, what's the typical protocol? And, I mean...
There is a stormwater retention pond. It's on the backside of Walton Farm Phase 1. The way that NC DOT hydrologist explained it to me, when they took the topos, they said that six acres of that Walton Farm water, that was a farm field, drained into the ditch at Cover Bridge Road. That ditch, I mind you, is the first picture in y'all's packet. It isn't much of a ditch, it was a swell, probably that deep. I never had a problem with water. But when they take and divert it and you strip the topsoil off of it and you compact it with soil and you put asphalt down and sidewalks down, you put a house down on it and you only got, what, point, a third of an acre? And you got 300 or 400 foot of sod around it? Your water's not going into clay, your water's going to run off. 90, 90-some percent of it, I'd say, is going to run off. You're going to get very little absorption into a clay base than you are a topsoil that is a tendable field. And that's a perfect example out there. If you ride out there on a day it's raining and look, you'll see there is no water coming from any of the surrounding fields into those ditches, road ditches at all whatsoever. Matter of fact, the main part of the road ditches up and down that road looked like what was in front of my house until all the water was put into it. But that, and I fought tooth and nail with them for the last two years on them. But that, and I, and I fought tooth and nail with them for the last two years on it. But this is my opinion. This is where y'all give the developer a statement saying, I've done everything to the town council needs that the town and the county has required me. You may have, but you have adversely affected my property in a major way by doing that. That is not the standards. My question one would be, who do y'all rely on to do the stormwater runoff on these properties? And how is it checked? Does anybody check it?
So I, I can jump in there and Joshua, you're welcome to step up. I will say that I believe when the original development that you're talking about Walton Farm came through, at the time, we were utilizing the county services to review the stormwater portions of the designs. Since then, the previous council, I'm going to probably get the dates wrong, but sometime in 2019 or early 2020, we adopted the new stormwater ordinance and we brought all the stormwater review in-house. That's where Susan Lockler that you mentioned earlier, as well as other staff within the engineering department, as well as a position that we have open that we're recruiting for right now, are dedicated specifically to be doing not only the, the paper review in terms of the upfront design, but also on the backend, the erosion control inspections to make sure that what's drawn on paper becomes reality in, in the field and works. Unfortunately, back in twenty thousand, or excuse me, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when this one was going through, we'd have to go back and review what the county reviewed this based on in terms of what standard regarding how much detention was required or otherwise. I'd have to look at probably some data as well with regard to the, the storm events. It sounds like, my, my understanding was that the improvements that DOT was doing was supposed to handle most of the regular storm events that we get here in North Carolina. You know, typically we get an inch, one inch of rainfall about once every month, about eleven times a year is what it is. That's kind of the normal design that you would do for a stormwater BNP for quality. But then beyond that, when we adopted our new policy, or excuse me, new ordinance two years or year and a half ago, we did add additional detention for the, I believe it's up to twenty-five-year storm. I'm looking at Joshua because I'm going by memory and that's typically dangerous. So unfortunately, I think to Mr. House's point, I think we've implemented the necessary precautions so that moving forward, development that is approved has those checks and balances already incorporated into the upfront approvals as well as on the backend. We'd have to go ahead and review the current status of your, of your request, of your situation right now. Because again, my apologies, I, I thought the DOT project had resolved the issue. I hadn't heard that it is continuing to be a problem. So I'm going to have to look at Joshua and his staff to start getting their head into it to figure out where that, where that disconnect is at this point.
Yes, it did go through the Johnston County. As a matter of fact, Johnston County almost lost their privilege to do the environmental for the Corps of Engineers. They almost pulled the inspections back from them because they changed house down there. Everybody, I think a lot of people got laid off, fired or whatever, moved on to different opportunities anyhow. But I mean, you know, I talked to the stormwater guy in Johnston County. It's a struggle with him every day. There's so much erosion going on right now in Johnston County, in the river basin of Noose River. If you go to the creek that's back there between us and Riverwood, perfect example, you got your steep slopes. You got your creek bed on one side and you got Walton Farm on the other side, there's a sixty-foot difference in elevation change. You can go to any rain event you want to, that new cut through that joins Walton Farm to the back of Riverwood can be an inch of rain, two inches of rain, half inch of rain. You look at that creek, it's the one where a child hadn't been drowning in that creek yet, just like the one in Roseville did last year. You know, it's, it's like I said, when I, when I come over here in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, whenever it was, there was eighteen dump truck tandem loads of silt in that creek just from the Riverwood development. But you still approved it that night and you still passed it. And now I'm faced with what we've got to face with in my road ditch every time it rains. It's not a day that goes by that this stuff doesn't worry me. And see, the thing about it is, he's getting ready to start on phase two as well. Now, has everything in phase two been approved?
From a land, land use entitlement standpoint, it wasn't, it has been approved for master plan. I'd have to ask Joshua to come up and give an update with the current construction drawings or construction documents, what, what the status is.
To my knowledge, the construction drawings have not been approved for a portion of the phase in the rear. I think there is some up along the club connection there that CDs have been approved for and they're working through some stuff. But I believe the other phase, and I don't know the name or the, the number of the phase in the rear, has not been approved in terms of CDs. But at a planning level, I do believe they have the master plan and a minor subdivision plan for one of the phases as well, I believe. So I can certainly check that and confirm.
Well, I've looked at the drawings for phase two. You know, when Fred Smith, the development company first started out, there was a small pond on the Walton property, Walton Farm property. That's where the creek starts at. It's all spring fed creek. You can go down there, dip a glass of water out it and it's as clear as what you get out of the water fountain. With the track record that has gone on out there, I would hope that you would pull phase two back in house and do some recalculations of it and make sure that I don't have to deal with any more stormwater runoff from the way they have designed that piece of property out there.
Certainly, and we love looking at Joshua at this point, for what we do have in-house that has not been approved at this point, we'll certainly want to look, but also see if there's any opportunities to make some adjustments on what's already been, been approved but not constructed and see if there's any opportunity to switch some flow in a different direction. We'll also contact our folks at DOT as well just to see if, I'm assuming at this point you've made them aware that the current or the most recent changes that they've made out there have not, have not been able to accommodate the larger.
Sam said he was through with it.
Okay. We will.
I think the state has come up and said that they've pretty much done all they can do with it. And matter of fact, one of the individuals from the state told me the water should have never been put in the ditch to begin with. I won't bring his name up, but he did finally tell me that.
They do, as part of the development review process, they do review the encroachments and the driveway permits, drainages, part of that, part of that review. So we will contact them as well to see where they're at as well as look at those other two, the phase that may have been already approved and the pending phase, see if there's any opportunity.
Well, there's some, there's some questions I have about the phase two development from the topos where it butts up against our property down in that wetlands area that's in there. It looks like those plans are going to allow water to come off their plateaus that they're building to put these houses on, to feed down into that wetland area. They're putting another silt pond at the back on the steep slope area. They're actually going up, they, well, I don't know if it's actually in the steep slope. I know the one in phase one, they put the pond in the steep slope area next to the creek. I don't know where this one falls out in the steep slope area or not. It may. But my concern is, they've already ruined that creek over at the back. We have a, a large pond that feeds, where the Dupree Pond feeds into ours and then feeds on down to the Noose. I shouldn't have any more stormwater runoff into that natural area at all, not with the silt pond he's putting in on that property. It should handle everything.
Yeah, again, based on the stormwater requirements that were in place at the time, I'd have to review that calculations. But typically, at least smaller storm events would have to be detained so that there wouldn't be, no, no increase up to a certain storm event. That's how they sized that, that new pond. But I'd have to look and see what the, what the performance standards that were required at the time were.
Look on that, that fourth picture on there I showed you was on August twentieth, twenty twenty-one. I was standing out under the shelter at the barn. It probably rained for thirty, forty-five minutes, probably had an inch, maybe just a, maybe a little, maybe a little bit over an inch. And that's what the ditch filled up capacity to just that quick.
Yeah, and any of that data that you have that we can look at, because obviously we've got the total amount of rainfall, within the intensity, how quickly that, that rain dropped, whether.
You can't, you can't design anything that will hold mother's natures.
Right, right. But we want to make sure whatever DOT, you know, from the improvements DOT made and what their assumptions were, we'd like to at least just backcheck that to see, kind of calibrate it, I guess, if you will. And from there, we can see if there's any opportunities to either switch some flow in a different direction or, or other detention opportunities.
Well, you've definitely got some opportunities right here that need to be fixed before any construction proceeds on to phase two. Because I've got enough problems with just phase one that haven't been fixed yet.
All right, anything else?
Well, I would like to kind of know how we proceed to resolve this issue.
Well, I would just tell you, based on tonight, this council will take your information under advisement and then we will have staff get in touch with you about how we're going to further along this process.
Okay. I would appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
I have one more thing. I encourage any of you to come to my driveway coming out of Clayton. This is my second question, my second concern. Under heavy traffic conditions, when people are coming home from work and try to turn left into my driveway. When DOT and them put that stuff in, I asked them to put me in the turn lane so I could get in and out of my driveway, turn a left to get in my driveway. They said it wasn't needed. So what they've done, I've got a stripped island in between my lane when I come from Clayton to turn left into my driveway. I've got about a six or eight foot strip that moves me to the other side of the road. You've got the turn lane up at Walton Farm for people heading west, turning into Loop Road. When more traffic gets backed up and stacked up into that, and I'm over here in the travel lane, which that's where I'm supposed to be because it's striped off, I don't have a turn lane to turn left into my driveway, you can't see. I mean, I've got an HD truck and it's, I can't see past the vehicles that's sitting there and spot the vehicles that's coming to the left of them. I encourage every one of you to come at a high traffic volume in the afternoon after the holidays are gone and try to turn left into my driveway when traffic is stacked up in that turn lane. Please feel free to do it. Because it's, it's a very unsafe situation. And if you take somebody, if your average car height, when you're sitting in the car is about forty-four inches for your eye level, there's no way you can see to turn left safely into my driveway. And when I had, I've had many meetings on site with DOT and everybody for the last year and a half, two years, ask that DOT engineer that. The first thing he said to me, he said, you know, I've never looked at it that way. Why do we have y'all, why do we have DOT if you're not looking after the safety of an individual to get in and out of his driveway? I mean, it's, it's a very unsafe situation. Something needs to be done about that as well. But a, a response from either one of them would be more than likely helpful. And then depending on what happens there is where I go next. Jada?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, y'all.
Good evening.
Good evening. I will make this quick. Emily Beddingfield. I just had a couple real quick comments on steep slopes. Little bit of background for those of y'all who don't know, I do have an environmental studies degree. That is a degree that focuses on policy and science of preservation. I also have a master's degree in urban planning, which I pursued basically for the sole reason that I saw the importance of protecting our ecological amenities by way of planning and, and development policy, right? So I have a very nerdy interest in that subject as well as having a, a current career in the development industry. One thing I wanted to point out that I'm not sure was, was totally discussed was, I'm not sure there's a real hurry to address this. There was a map that was a part of the agenda that showed a GIS analysis of steep slopes. And to me, not being able to see the stream buffers, it, it looked like a lot of those steep slopes might be preserved already by way of state ordinance. That could only be totally verified by a little bit deeper dive into GIS to show the zone one and zone twos of those stream buffers. But I think there's a question there of how much is actually at risk in the near future. And I say that knowing that we have a UDC rewrite coming our way, coming your way really soon, where I would completely anticipate, especially based on that growth plan element that Porter brought up, that is going to be a large part of the discussion with this council, is environmental protection. And I would love to see those questions brought up in a larger context and a larger conversation of what is important to this town. Because steep slopes are an incredibly gray area. It's really hard to draw a line. It's always going to be sort of arbitrary because the science is there, but you're always weighing it against the pros and cons, like Joshua mentioned, of development versus the ability to implement engineered controls versus, you know, the vegetation and things like that. So there's just a lot of different elements at play. And when I think about the reality of extending this conversation out even over the next year, because that conversation's going to start hopefully over the next few months as you guys get launched into this UDC rewrite. From the development community, it's hard for me to see really a loss of a lot of resources in the near future versus, I mean, for example, in the past, I'm told by past planning directors and staff that that ordinance was never implemented. So, you know, if we want to look at what the ramifications are of not implementing that, we might not have to look very far. We probably have some local examples to see what that looks like, if I had to guess. And I don't know any examples personally. I'm just saying, it is my understanding that maybe that ordinance wasn't implemented in the past. So I say all that, again, with that background, that I am deeply committed to environmental preservation. I believe very strongly in preservation through policy. I just know how valuable and limited staff's time is right now, how understaffed they are and how many things are pressing on them. We just heard of another example of something that's about to eat up some staff time to find a solution. And again, I would love for these conversations to take place, but I would just encourage you to think about that taking place in the context of that broader UDC rewrite, which is going to take place in the context of our growth elements as to how committed we are as a town to environmental preservation. So I don't want to say, don't talk about it, just let development go where it is. I just say, you know, it's a complicated conversation and it's a very broad subject and should be considered as such. That's all. So always happy to answer questions, always happy to have conversations with y'all. Just wanted to throw that out there. So thank you very much for the time.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Smith. I'm one of Johnny House's neighbors. I live on eighteen fourteen North O'Neill Street. I like, he may not be aware of it, but the driveway he's talking about is directly across from where you're talking about putting soccer fields on Loop Road, eleven soccer fields at an intersection in his driveway. So that's very much in your purview to look at that whole intersection, what needs to be done, especially when you're talking about bringing that kind of crowds in. The other point that I'd like to bring up is, well, one of the other points I'd like to bring up is, as part of the twenty twenty, forty-five plan, when it became, went before the planning board, it was presented with a sheet in it that said the town wanted to take the right of way, it is a sixty-foot right of way of O'Neill Street, and widen that to eighty-foot, to eight, to an eighty-foot right of way. That's, won't affect him, but it will affect me and into town. You will find that a lot of people will find that their front, front yards have suddenly become into the roadway. Get shifted out because you widen the, the. Get shifted out, because you widen the road right-of-way, it's right there in the center, doesn't change, it's out into the people's yards. There's people on O'Neill Street and some of these other roads, that their front yards are going to disappear into the roadway. On the steep slopes tonight, as well as the right-of-way change, you have to realize that you're talking developer, developer, developer. Well, the person that owns it present, at the present time, is the one that loses when you start putting a regulation on something. When it becomes this less developable land, developer doesn't, he'll make his plans and change it and work around it. But the person that owns it at the present time is the one that takes the economic loss. So, you have to remember that when you make these decisions, you're actually hurting the present people that own it. And it's an economic cost to them. It can be quite substantial. It's also going to hurt the town's future tax base if you take land and say, you can't develop this, you can't allow a road in this. Suddenly, developer comes in, he can only go so far, and he has to put a cul-de-sac because he can't put a cut-through road and tie the roads together from one hillside to the other. You've sent, you've got something blocking it with this new policy you're wanting to implement. So, there's cost on that economically. We haven't heard how many acres are affected by this change or these possible changes. There's no, so many acres, when you're talking, what, at raw land level, $25,000 an acre? At the developed level, $100,000, $200,000 an acre? An acre of land that's pulled out of development makes a world of difference to what developer's willing to pay for something. He looks at it, he can't do so. We may be talking $4 million, $10 million, $20 million. If you look at, start adding up the numbers and you take 200 acres out, it's hardly worth having a policy if it doesn't affect 200 acres in this whole big area, you're talking, and if it's $100,000 an acre, you're talking $20 million, you're pulling out of somebody's pocket. Now, it's not one individual, and they may not even know it that you're taking it out of their pocket, but it's being pulled out of somebody's pocket now or sometime in the future. So, please consider this when you consider these policies, these policy changes. It's not a bad idea to look at the environment, but there is that other side of it. Please remember, it's a big side, and you may not have the people come up here and get excited about it, because a lot of them didn't know it, like the 2005 change, buried in some paperwork somewhere, nobody even knew it existed until it finally suddenly became, got enforced, and suddenly it became a hot issue. Same thing with the right-of-ways, on the widening of the right-of-ways on the roads. It's good for the town, but you've got to realize you're taking something from somebody else. And sometimes it's their front yard. If you look at North O'Neill Street in town, some of those yards are, what, 30-foot wide at the most, I mean, as far as deep from street to the house? And you're suddenly making it so that anybody can come in and put a utility anywhere basically in their front yard. It's a big change, and you need to be aware of it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you for those public comments. I'll now turn it over to the council for comments. All right, hearing none, I will, if there's nothing else to come before this council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.